Good morning and welcome to the Standing Committee meeting for Wednesday, May 12th, 2021. Council will continue to meet virtually until further notice. Meetings can now be viewed live on the City Channel and live streamed on YouTube. Our first order of business is public comment, and I would like to remind all speakers that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council and profoundly will not be permitted. When once we announce your name, please announce yourself and your community and your neighborhood. For the record, you will be given three minutes to speak. Our first speaker today is Shamon Poma.
Greetings, greetings. Peace, love, and light in Lake Shaw, Allegheny. I am Shamon Poma Chalk Mom Yehalahi of the Airqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And I'm the medicine woman and healer for our people. And there has been much to do and much to say about the health of the community of which our people are in very mass numbers. The quality of our land and our soil, the quality of our air and our water, to be of great concern to us as we are the stewards of our lands. And we engage and welcome those who are also wanting to do the right thing by ways of cleaning our air, cleaning our water, and cleaning our soil. We're having multiple conversations of different levels, and we will be speaking with the state politicians who are responsible as well. We have been the stewards of our land since time immemorial. And since the many wars that have been waged on our lands throughout the Americas, to include Central America, South, Northwest, and East and all of its adjoining islands, we have seen a depredation happen upon our lands. It is incumbent upon the city, it is incumbent upon the Pittsburgh Water Sewer Authority, it is incumbent upon the the Duquesne Light and and People's Gas to make sure that when they are digging in our roads and digging in our streets, that there is free and prior informed consent that is made to us, the Aboriginal people, the Airqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People, so that we can be a part of these discussions, making sure that you are stewarding our land as we would desire our land to be steward. As you are all sworn to the oath that you take to the Constitution. And Indy and excluding Indians not taxed. You are responsible. We will be at the table. I yield.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Randall Taylor, which will be followed by Tim Stevens. Randall Taylor?
Good morning, Council. Randall Taylor, I currently live at Homewood, fortunately be moving back to East Liberty in the next few weeks. So I'm calling to ask you to postpone any action about forming any kind of task force around the relief dollars, recovery dollars. And I just simply want to say thanks to the University of Pittsburgh. I know my history pretty well. And we are living in as momentous times as 1776, 1860, 1932, and the 1960s. And momentous change is here, and we must rise to to the moment. Franklin Roosevelt and Lyndon Banks Johnson faced with the crisis in America, created many, many, many programs and hundreds of millions of dollars to help people transition through that difficult period, but never in our history has the government allocated this much money of straight dollars to the American people to address issues. Yesterday, I was fortunate to be with some city leaders and people had done great research about the many different pots and dollars and how it could be used, but there's still a lot of unanswered questions about that. I would contend that we may be veteran formed than council. And so I believe that we should take our time, we should include as many different voices and perspectives in this city about how this historic once in a lifetime opportunity that we can use task force dollars to make change. We know that there's dollars in that fund to actually house homeless people today. Do we know that there's much, many, many dollars of help with childcare? And if we decided we wanted to actually put dollars in the homes in the hands of families who may decide against the childcare or may decide they want to pay a trusted relative or friend for childcare. And particularly as we talk about housing, we have a once in a lifetime opportunity to to bring communities like Homewood back to life and to and to bring tens of thousands more people into our homes in an affordable way. And when we and again, as I'll say over and over again, we look at the housing of Homewood that is that is is not generating any tax revenue, it will now be generating tax revenue that will pay for itself in decades to come. We have an opportunity. I say no task force. I would like to be on the task force. I think I'm just as qualified as many people there, but I think we should do best as to reach out and bring as many people to this process, as many great minds and talents that we have in this city to this once in a life opportunity. Let's do it right. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tim Stevens.
Morning, Council. We're at a very pivotal moment in the history of our city with the dynamic decisions and actions of the new Biden Harris administration to attempt to impact the future of our nation, including the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, the County of Allegheny, and the City of Pittsburgh. So as to positively impact the many social, economic, and equity needs, it's imperative that the process by which the decisions are reached as to how some $355 million will be spent to impact the needs of our city be as absolutely transparent as humanly possible. These decisions have the possibility of impacting Pittsburgh for years to come, particularly with regard to the possibility of boldly impacting the housing needs of the citizens of Pittsburgh and addressing such needs as expanded childcare, healthcare, human services, economic equity, and support for our African American minority undeserved, underserved, and under supported businesses. It's in the spirit of the Black Political Empowerment Project, along with many of our community associates, strongly suggests change in the current language contained in Bill 2021 1440 A R P A Trust Fund Resolution, which addresses the oversight of how the $355 million will be managed and spent. In Section Two of the proposed resolution, we're proposing after the comma that you strike everything in that sentence, but keep the following sentence. The existing task force, which is already in place, does not have to be housed within the trust fund. In addition, we request an opportunity for as much public input as possible into such an important potentially life changing decision making process for the City of Pittsburgh. With such an ongoing challenge to the housing stock in the City of Pittsburgh, an ongoing shortage of housing for low to moderate income residents, including addressing desire for former Pittsburghers who felt they were forced to leave to have an opportunity to return to our city, requesting the City Council, City of Pittsburgh, to move expeditiously to assess the condition of some 14,000 properties currently owned by the City of Pittsburgh so as to decide what must be done to creatively provide housing for low to moderate income residents of Pittsburgh. The city is serious about providing affordable housing. This request should be an immediate top priority. Such a process was conducted five years ago by the City of Detroit, should now be implemented in Pittsburgh. Maybe experts in our college and university community could assist in this process. In addition, we're calling for a meeting of the leadership of the city's land bank to assess the status of the efforts to impact housing opportunities for residents of Pittsburgh, including how existing housing stock can be preserved, how people who financially are challenged can have support systems put into place to allow them to remain in their homes. We urge City Council, the Dodo Administration, to address these important requests and recommendations which have the opportunity of positively impacting our City of Pittsburgh for years to come. Thank you for the opportunity. Please take our recommendation very, very seriously.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Clara Weble.
Hi, everyone. Good morning, Council. My name's Clara Weble, and I'm a downtown resident in District Six. I'm calling in to raise my concerns regarding the American Rescue Plan Resolution being presented today, Resolution 2021 1440. In reading the language of Section Two, it seems that the initial uses of the funds will be set by the Pittsburgh Recovery Task Force. My understanding of the resolution is that first the task force will make recommendations, then the City Council will vote and appropriate the funds within the limits set by those recommendations. Although there are some City Council members and members of the Office of the Mayor represented on this body, it seems that the budgeting discretion of the 354.9 million should not be determined by this group alone. I would like some clarification on if my reading of the bill is accurate, and if so, I believe that Section Two should be changed and the uses of the funds should instead be fully determined by our democratically elected officials with insight provided by the task force and other community groups and the general public as well. The $354.9 million is a lot of money. As a member of the Pittsburgh Human Rights City Alliance, I'm calling for a transparent and equitable process of allocating the A R P funds that includes representation by residents most impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. Such funds must be used to prevent a deepening of the city's already grave racial inequalities and should be put to use to help overcome the city's abysmal record in this regard. And we need to invest in work to achieve a vision of a city where all residents can thrive. This requires deep investments that address the needs of our city's people of color, poor, and working people. In regard to the American Rescue Fund, in regards to the American Rescue Plan Funds, we remind city officials that our city has obligations under international law to treat housing as a human right, reduce racial inequities, and ensure transparent and participatory decision making. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Akuhana Halma Kina.
Greetings for peace, light, and love. My title is Akuhana Halma Kina. I am the Grand Inca of the Airqua Confederacy of Aboriginal American People. And I am speaking on City Council today to advise City Council members and those who are listening today of our rights, our rights are human rights, our rights are protected under the American Declaration of Rights of Indigenous People and also the American Declaration of Rights of Indigenous People, the United Nations Declaration of Rights of Indigenous People. It is our duty to inform and empower the Aboriginal indigenous people here in America as we have been since time immemorial. We've been mislabeled Negro, we have been mislabeled Black, we have been mislabeled colored and African American, to include Afro American. Through various eugenics programs and missions and goals, our identity has been hidden. And now we have the honorable duty to bring light to that which has been hidden from our people. Why is this important, you may ask? Because without an identity, you have no standing. And so for us to be corrected, our status to be corrected when it comes to law is of the utmost importance because our children who will be the future leaders of tomorrow need to know who in fact we are. We are the people of the land. We are the rightful stewards of the land, and our rights need to be protected. On Monday, I had the opportunity to speak to the mayor directly, to which he replied, "We will meet to discuss these affairs." And so I would urge City Council members to follow suit and do the same, to reestablish these conversations as we have a government to government relationship as set forth in House Congress Resolution 331. As set forth in Senate Con Raz 76, the precedent has been set. Our representation is in the Constitution under Article One, Section Two, Clause Three, which states, "And excluding Indians not taxed." To not be taxed, to not be burdened, to not be handled, to not be censured, to not be forcibly assimilated. And so these are our pleas to you, City Council members, to acknowledge what our rights are. The international community is watching. We have a scheduled appointment with the O A S, the Organization of American States, to report back to them as to how you respond it to us. So each and every time we reach out, we are documenting these incurrences. We are documenting.
Thank you. That does exhaust our list of registered speakers, which takes us to our Standing Committee's agenda, and would a clerk please take the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Here.
Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kelsmith. Ms. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle Chair.
Here.
Seven members present.
Thank you. Our first committee of the day is Finance and Law, which is chaired by myself. We have one deferred paper, Bill 1397.
Bill 1397, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Solicitor to Enter Services Agreement with David Wright for Expert Witness Services Related to Pending Civil Rights Litigation in the U.S. District Court in an Amount Not to Exceed $10,000.
Motion to hold a speaking session?
It was held.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Councilman.
Yeah. Motion to approve.
Second.
I was there.
Yeah, you were there. Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Can you oppose? Those recommend it. Our new first new paper, Bill 1440.
Bill 1440 Resolution Providing for the Creation of the American Rescue Plan Trust Fund and Setting Conditions for the Deposit Into and Expenditure From Said Trust Fund.
Motion to approve with discussion, please.
Second.
Mr. Chair, may I?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Is Kevin Paulus available to, is he here in the waiting room? Yeah, you are. Kevin, good morning. Thanks, Kevin, for being here, or Director, for being here. So there is confusion in the language here as to how funds are to be directed. And I believe that through the first two pieces of legislation that Council considered, we had corrected those. And we had corrected those, but if I understand this correctly, and Madam Clerk, I can't seem to access the actual legislation, but from the Communication Director from you, if I can bring it up. Let's see here. And it did have it right here. Forgive me.
Could the clerks find the previous related bills for us? I've been clicking around trying to find the task force formation bill number, and I can't remember that number.
But I will start with the Financial Impact Statement. And the final paragraph speaks to a detailed spending plan to be set by the Joint Recovery Task Force that consists of Office of the Mayor, President of City Council, President Pro Tem, and Chairman, Committee of Finance and Law. The plan will be finalized and adopted as part of the 2021 budget reopen process. We had agreed unanimously on Council that all all members of Council are budgetary fiduciary agents of the city and have equal say and comment into any monies that come before Council to be expended. And so I believe, I haven't had a chance to read Mr. Stevens' letter, excuse me, but I believe that is the the argument that is being made, that we cannot funnel these monies through a very narrow set of opinions or thought processes, that it has to be a much broader discussion and that each and every member of the Council is an equal say in the consideration and expenditure of these funds. So I certainly advocate for any language that needs to be corrected that that clearly states that each and every member of the Council is an equal member in the consideration and distribution of these funds. And then to provide for further guidelines for a broader and more open public conversation. But with that comment, I'll turn it to Director, and then I have some other questions and comments, please.
Sure. Good morning, Councilmembers. The intent of the language, and we made some slight tweaks that may not have made it into the Fiscal Impact Statement, but the intent of the language of the bill would be for the task force to make recommendations for the plan in that the allocations would be voted on by City Council through a public hearing process. So to ensure that the Councilmembers do have that voice.
Yeah, but words are important. We're writing contract here. And nothing to be left open for interpretation or misunderstanding. And so the verbiage of this is incredibly important. And and I'm going to argue vociferously for the language to be corrected. I'm finding, I'm sorry, I'm having such a struggle here.
Councilman Kraus?
Yes.
The very last sentence of the actual legislation reads, "Funds will then be voted and appropriated at the direction of City Council and the mayor."
So I can't access the legislation, and that's where I'm failing here.
So, okay, so let me read Section Two to you, just so we're all clear. The very last section says, "Money's deposited into said trust fund will be used to cover expenses and uses set forth by the General Guidelines established by the U.S. Department of Treasury Program Administration of the State and Local Coronavirus Fiscal Recovery Trust Fund as recommended by the Joint Pittsburgh Recovery Task Force, consisting of representatives of the Office of the Mayor, President of City Council, President Pro Tem, and Chairman, Committee on Finance and Law. Funds will then be voted and appropriated at the direct, at the direction of City Council and the mayor."
Perhaps maybe the dissatisfaction or the confusion around the the language there, and I wish I had this in front of me, was as directed, suggested, considered, recommend. I just, I I have a level of discomfort with the language as directed. Is that is that the exact words that are used, Mr. Chair? Or as recommended?
It's, yes. So it says, "As recommended by the Joint Recovery Task Force." So there's a recommendation in the last sentence is, "Funds will then be voted and appropriated at the direction of City Council and the mayor."
I'm gonna try.
You may want to provide more clarity maybe in the last sentence.
I'm not looking to hamper this in any way if we need to hold a week, which I'm not advocating for in any way, but to get the language right, I'm happy to do so. If we need to pass today and and add additional language for the final vote on Tuesday, I'm good with that as well, too. The the letter that comes over from Director Paulus, which of course is not the legislation in any way, shape, or form, still speaks to the funds being directed by the Recovery Task Force. And I'm just, I consider to be leery of that, even if it's just a mindset. I continue to be leery about hobbling any member of Council to have an equal opportunity and an equal voice to advocate for the distribution, the consideration, distribution of those dollars as they see fit, and to put that on the table for consideration without any, any limitations.
Councilman Kraus, I can address your concerns about the letter. We did have a few versions of the legislation before we sent it over. So I believe that there is a version control with the letter that we can correct it to uniformly match what is the language that is specifically in the body of the legislation, which would, which would have the task force recommend a plan for these funds and then allocation to be, the allocation to be voted on by City Council.
Yeah, I'm all about having leadership of the body take recommendations and distribution under consideration and make those recommendations to Council. Leadership's in place for for a reason, and I respect, I respect that and and abide by that. I just, I want to be absolutely crystal clear without any, any whatever the word is I'm looking for, that every, every member of the body has an equal and opportunity to to recommend and open for consideration any ideas that they may have in terms of the recommend, the acceptance and distribution of the dollars. And I just want to make certain that the language clearly reflects that.
Councilman Kraus, sorry to butt in, but I emailed you the full text.
Thank you.
Your most recent, I just cut and pasted that for you because I know that you said, you said you really, really wanted to see it. So I just just did that while you were talking. And if you want to take a minute, Mr. Chair, I I could ask some of my questions if you wouldn't mind. If that's all right.
If Councilman Kraus relinquishes the floor.
Yeah, give me one second to read through this. Okay, and then I will be happy to. Money's deposited into said trust fund will be used to cover expenses and uses set forth by general guidelines that are established by the Department of Treasury Program Administration of State and Local Coronavirus Recovery Act Fund as recommended. Again, as recommended by the Joint Pittsburgh Recovery Task Force as recommended. But I have, I have reservations about those words. I think they're they're too strong. You know, with with recommendation made, with consideration by, with, I just think we need softer language in there so as to not concentrate power in just a few members, which I'm not arguing that that power would be abused in any way, but just we're writing a legal document here. I just feel better that the verbiage is not as recommended by the Pittsburgh Recovery Task Force. And I'm actually okay with funds will then be voted and appropriated at the direction of City Council and the mayor. And I might even have to reconsider the ending of that language of as, and the mayor. The mayor does, can make recommendations, agree, but the final appropriation in the direction of all funds always rests with City Council.
Not exactly.
I'm sorry, you, Councilman?
Yes, not exactly.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Hold on, hold on. Okay, all right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not. Just, just put a order. I'm not, I'm not trying to talk, I'm just saying that just to that one statement that there is a, we can appropriate the funds, we can't spend it. So it's that the mayor. Yeah, it's that, that.
Agreed. Point taken. I'm gonna relinquish the floor for now, but I suspect I'm gonna have additional comment by the time other members have a chance to speak. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Appreciate it. So I do have both sets of legislation up on my screen. And so I want to remind Councilmembers that Bill 2021 1389 that we passed in final action on April 27th is the creation of the task force. And the task force is to convene, and it's again just members of the administration and three council members. And it's to make recommendations to the distribution of funds. And it's, you know, it has a very clear prioritizations that will be taken under consideration and then recommended to Council. Now, the the task force legislation is worrisome because I concur with Councilman Kraus and I understand what our public commenters are saying about Section Two. So to the bill in front of us today, structuring the trust fund. We're already going to have recommendations from the task force, and we look forward to recommendations from the task force. The trust fund is there in Section One to receive the funds. That's all good. In Section Two, the monies will be expended according to the guidelines established by the Treasury Department. That's all good. But the way it's worded here, it says that the monies will be expended as recommended by the task force. And that first sentence. And that's not, that's up to Council to decide. And if we vote yes today, we are voting to structure this trust fund to only expend according to the task force. So we'd be in effect abdicating our responsibilities, and I don't think we can. And so it's just unnecessary. We were, we already passed the bill to establish the task force, to hear from the task force, and that that is a separate bill. And that, that is a separate bill. Um, and so this one really doesn't need anything after the comma of the first sentence of section two. Um, and so it, and then that removes the, the stricture with an I. On the trust fund of um, only doing what the task force says. And so if we just strike out everything after the comma of first sentence, then we remove, it says, you know, that the. Monies will be expend to cover expenses and uses set forth by the guidelines of the Treasury Department and then period. And then funds will then be voted and appropriate at the direction of city council and the mayor. And I, I think that removes, so we have both, we still have both things. It's just that we don't have to put, try to put like the task force legislation into the trust fund. I think that's where um, it becomes, um. It reads almost if we left it this way, we would be obligating the trust fund to the task force and instead of to council. And if we, even if we leave it this way, I think at most you'd be saying that council has maybe an up or down vote. And that is not, um, I think in the spirit of our discussion when we were talking about the task force, right? Council should vote on the allocations of the trust, you know, these, all of these American Rescue Plan funds. And in fact, we know that they are to last us until December of twenty twenty four. Um, so I, I, I'd say it's we, what we can look forward to is a great conversation between the recommendations from the task force and the priorities. And um, and then council having the discussion with the public and public input at the city council table. Um, and so I, I just, I just, I concur, I think we should strike out everything after the comma of the first sentence and just leave it um. At the direction of council and mayor.
Mr. Chair.
Hold on, Councilwoman Kraus, you finished?
I'm finished for now, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Burgess.
Oh. Let me. Suggest, I, I had no part in writing of this legislation, so in full disclosure. So let me, let me, but I do want to talk about the legislation that I did write and its intent. Normally, so let, we have to start off with what would normally happen. Normally what would happen is the administration would create a priority internally. Like they do the budgets, they would then take this, these monies, they would create some. Document as to what their priorities were, they would send it to council, council would have public hearings and then council would decide. Um, um, that budgetary amount. Then, as those funds are distributed, council then gets a second bite of the apple, right? That we approve like any other budget, we approve this budgetary um, um, expenditures. And then as the line items are spent, they then come back to council and then we get the second bite of the apple. To agree on those expenditures, that's the natural way we function, I think we all agree with that, right? So what I attempted to do was not in any way stop that process. So my interest was not on that process once it got to council, right? That was never my intention to any way, in any shape, form or fashion, limit, control, direct council's normal. Um, process. What I tried to do though was two things, was to have council be a participant in the creating of the plan. Before it got to council in some way. So that there would be similar to what we've done in terms of budget amendments. That, that since this is a once in a lifetime process, I thought that it would be good to have. A group of people, not all nine, because we can't meet as nine, right? We can't all be, do it that way, that, that before it comes to council, we get council's input on the front end. Even before it comes to us, council has some say so of what that document looks like, that's the first thing. And I think that's, agreed to that, and that was the intent. So I just want you to know, my intent was never, is not ever in any way to limit council's participation. Actually, the opposite was to get council a seat at the internal table before it ever gets to council. Secondly, and then this is the thing, I think we need to be, and I, I don't, again, Kevin, I didn't write it, so I, I don't know the purpose, but I would suggest this. We're living in a time of great unrest in terms of equity. Um, we've had riots across our country. We've had a, a great awakening, right? And so those people who are not real fans of equity, um, I think. Um, would be really comfortable of taking out the conversation of equity from these things. I understand that, right? That, you know, in, in their history, in history, they, they've shown that they don't believe in equity, I understand that. I would suggest to you, I really don't care what the language looks like, but we should still say even in the trust fund. There's some commitment to equity because our speakers, that's really what they want. And so if we're going to follow the spirit of what they want, I don't think it's to take out. Um, this idea that we're not going to at least have equity embedded. It does not control because we create this, this, and I know, I, again, I'm not, I didn't write this. I'm not really, I'm comfortable with our language we choose. At the end of the day, council will always decide, right? So, 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 but I do think that there should be some conversation of equity. In this document and any other document that comes out of the recovery funds. Because that's the, the stance the city, the mayor, this council is taking, is that we're going to use these funds equitably. That's on the first stage, so I, I want to say that, so. And I, I, again, I will be open to, to, to the language compromise, I, I'm not hostile to it. I think, you know, I have great confidence in Mr. Kraus's ability to craft that, I'm, I'm just saying we should um, um. Have equity baked in and make sure that it's baked in, so there's no doubt, that's the first thing. Um, second thing is, and I talked to um, Councilwoman Strausberger about this actually from the very beginning. I believe we should have extended hearings. I think we should have um, perhaps um, a website where comments can be um, uh, comments or recommendations. There should be a very broad, open. Um, um, transparent process of how we decide to spend these funds. I really believe that's important, right? I think we have to have public hearings, we have to have, you know, written stuff, I think we have to have all that stuff. And, and I think that's important. But I'm also going to now push back a little bit. Um, and this is, you know, I, I don't really talk about this too much all the time publicly, but this is something. That, you know, I got from my mentor, you know, Doug Shields was a mentor of mine. And he, he, he spoke this, I thought, eloquently from my beginning on council and I'm now again, old guy. There are really two forms of representation. There is the delegate model, there's the trustee model, right? Those are standard sort of English, you know, and there's a hybrid model, which I think we do, but there's the, 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 the delegate says. You're elected by this group of people, you do exactly what they say. And that model you hear oftentimes in public comment now, you know, there's even a, 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 a desire to take away our oversight of police, right? You, you've heard that stop the station. And what they're really talking about is a delegate model, saying that we are simply pass-throughs, rubber stamps. Of some group of people's wheel and they can rise up at any may, take away that our authority and decide for us what we should do. I hear that, I understand that, but there's another role. One that I believe also is, in fact, when Burke wrote it, uh, it's absolutely another form, right? Is that the trustee model, we are elected by the people. To serve on their best interest, to use all of our skill, all of our education, all of our background to do what's in their best interest. Now, I think both are true. I think we have to listen to the people and when there's an overwhelming, um, overwhelming. A voice from the people, we are, we are elected from their representative. But for my district, I have seniors and high rises. Um, I have church pastors, I have community organizations. I have a variety of people with a variety of interests, many of them don't come to public comment. They're not part of these community groups and they're not writing, I also think their voice is important. And I have to take their voice into consideration also, and so I'm going to suggest to you, um, that at the end of the day. We are elected by the whole community. We are elected to serve them and we are elected to represent them. We are the peop- this is the people's table, we are their representatives. When we speak as five and sometimes, or we speak for this city. And some, somehow these, these advocates who somehow suggest that we are not. Representatives because and we need to somehow be, be removed from our positions or self-landed by community members. Um, because we're not transparent, I, I, I am, I'm going to reject that, right? There, there, we have elections for reasons, elections have consequences. We, we by, by law are the people's representatives. I will always, um, and, and those of you who've been with me, I'm, I'm consistent with that. The power of council is not in any, any one council member. We argue, we, 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 we pontificate, you know, sometimes like be, I'm long-winded, right? We talk and we argue and, and that's why I love council, right? I love this debate, I love the public, transparent discussion of issues. That's something I love as a speech teacher, I spent my life teaching this stuff, so I love it. But at the end of the day, the power of council is when five of us vote. And is not any individual member, it's the majority of council. And I respect that, I concur with that. I want to make sure that nothing I say and do in any way, shape, form or fashion, in any way, ever hints at a, um, a disagreement with that. Right, I believe in that so, so much. But at the same time, I also am going to say, and I'll, I'll say, I'll go a step further. Um, I may sometimes argue with council members or even argue with the council in general. I mean, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm old and, and fussy sometimes, I may do that. But at the end of the day, at the end of the day. I'm going to stand with my colleagues on our decisions. I'm going to argue that if you look over the last eight to ten years of our actions. We have been one of the most progressive councils in the country. We have passed a flurry over the last eight years of significant change in police. In affordable housing, almost every checklist of progressive activity, we have been leaders thereof. We don't always get the credit for it, but that part is absolutely true. And so I, I, I hear the, the, the hesitancy. But we intend, all of us, and I'll speak for all of us, I, I know, because I've spoken to most of us about this. All of us know this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. We absolutely are going to look at this through a leg equity lens. And council as a whole will then do two things, or three things maybe. One is we will, we will at some point agree to some equity decision-making in terms of how it's budgeted. We will approve some budget of these recovery funds. And then as the funds are implemented and spent, we will also uh, look at those individual spending. To make sure that they meet the purposes they were designed to do. And so um, our process of the equity task force does not limit a council. It actually empowers council and gives it another uh, layer uh, with the administration of input. And that was the, it was not to limit, but actually to empower. Um, that's a long conversation, I wanted to put all my ideas out there because I probably won't speak too much, but I do want to say that I have. Uh, you know, I, I believe in the power of the majority of council, I believe in it down to my toes. And so, um, um, I, I would never, I want to just make it clear to anyone who's listening. This will not limit council, it will hopefully more empower council. And at the end of the day, this will be a transparent, clear process that council as elected. Or, or the stewards and the people's representatives at the end of the day to make these decisions. That's a long conversation, I've laid all my ideas out there and I'll now listen.
Thank you, we have Councilman Coghill followed by Councilman Strausberger.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair, um, I'll be brief. I was not insulted about the task force, I'm, I'm not sure who made that decision as to the leadership and who would be on that task force. Um, I did not support it last week, um, because quite frankly, I requested to be on that task force. I think I bring a lot to the table, um, as far as, you know, spending issues go. I feel strongly that the South Hills should have representation at that table. So I was never comfortable with the way it's written up, I'm not comfortable with the wording as it is. Um, I really don't see a need for a task force, I believe council should be the task force, all nine of us. I hear many, many people say about how we should spend this money, um, you know, and I feel. If I or somebody from the South Hills doesn't have a seat at the table, then, you know, we don't have a voice there, so. It doesn't seem very equitable to me at this point. Um, I'm disappointed to say that I didn't hear back from my request to be on the task force. Which gives me even further hesitation, so. So I, I cannot support it, I'm not supporting it today, I'm not going to support the account as it's written. We'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, and, and I would like to know who and why. It was discussed as to who was to be on that task force, who made that decision, I would like to know that, if somebody can answer that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Strausberger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I will just say that I hear what Reverend Burgess is saying and um. I agree that we are representatives and often delegates in our, in our positions. And as much as we all know our own districts and can probably anticipate what people from our districts would be. Especially those who raise their voices the loudest oftentimes would be asking for. We don't know everything about what our district um, needs and what, what folks are, are, are going to be asking for with the distribution of these funds. And I think that this allocation of funds presents a real opportunity. Not just to get it right for this money, which is critically important, and I agree. Equity has to be at the forefront, has to be the lens through which we view our allocation of funds. And that to be the most effective, we need to find a few acumen pressure points throughout the city and really go big into those. To make the biggest impact and not necessarily try to, you know, please every single resident of this city. For the thing that their pet project in their backyard. Um, I think we'll have a bigger impact if we, if we focus on, on the most impactful projects. Um, that said, I don't think that we will necessarily even regardless of whether there's a task force or whether it's the nine of us deciding. We're going to know everything about what is needed or be able to make the best decision. Um, and that is why I continue to process to, one, build a better public engagement process. Than what we've traditionally done around um, our, our capital and operating budgets. I think we've gotten better over the years, I don't think we're there yet and we can continue to learn and continue to iterate and continue to build a better. Public engagement process for this and for our twenty twenty two budget. What if this could be a test run for what we do in twenty twenty two? Last year's budget process felt very reactive and I think we could build something with, among ourselves. In partnership with the groups that we know are already starting to talk about what the, you know, what they're doing to organize around this process. And with the mayor's Office of Community Affairs and truly look at what other cities are doing, but also create something that works for Pittsburgh. To engage the public, because I don't think we're there yet, but I think we can get there for creative and don't rely. Because I don't think we're there yet, but I think we can get there for creative and don't rely on old uh, traditional ways of of engaging with the public, which is very much like sit and listen. People talk, we listen, we don't respond, and then it's over. I don't think that's the best way to go. So I just wanted to put out there that I'm very interested in having that conversation. I will be there at the table to help craft that process. Um, and you know, as for the, the language in this particular legislation today, I, I'm fine with the task force. Um, Councilman, to Councilman Coghill's point, I, I would hope that you would put some trust in the president of council, who I know that you work closely with representing that part of town. And I know that her part of town is not your part of town, but um, as far as I've seen, she's represented and worked with, with you all on that side of the river really well. Um, and that regardless of whether it's a recommendation or it's a direction or what the language says that we, that we do find a way to really engage the public. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other members for first round? If not, I'll quickly chime in. Um, one, we're still discussing simply the creation of the actual trust fund itself. Um, to Councilman Kraus's initial concern, my recommendation would be, I think we need to leave the joint Pittsburgh Recovery Task Force in the legislation. But as opposed to saying as recommended by, I would change the language to be, my suggestion would be with recommendation by, um, but that would be my simple change. Uh, second round, I believe, Councilman Kraus, you have your hand up? And no. Any other members? Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. Um, so I've got some other ideas about making sure that there are better whereas clauses, um, which are always important for the intent and spirit of legislation. Um, so there's an option of putting it um, more of the task force language in the whereas clauses. And um, I'd have to chew on um, your recommendation, Councilman Lavelle of putting, was it with guidance? I've forgotten what you just said because I was reading and listening at the same time.
I'm, I said with a, with a recommendation by, so you're simply receiving a recommendation um, as opposed to saying you're voting on it as recommended, but you're just receiving it, which is with a recommendation.
I'm literally writing it down so I don't have to ask you twice. And um, yeah, my concern is the way it reads now is that it reads as the expenditures will occur according to, as recommended by the Joint Task Force. And then the next sentence says, um, you know, then voted on and appropriated at the direction of city council and the mayor. Um, after a period. So it, it reads like an up or down vote. And I, I'm afraid that that is not the dynamic that we are talking about with including citizen input. And um, you know, really having an interrogative long discussion with our public that's deep and rich and gives us a lot more information, which is what I just heard Councilwoman um, Strasburger talking about. Um, and I, I, I too am eager to have that kind of conversation with the public. We get the votes each of us, right? And our, we get to vote on, on these uh, budget appropriations and on legislation. And our, our constituencies can vote us in and vote us out. And yet we make our decisions, but we don't have total information. So as Councilwoman Strasburg was saying, we don't know everything. We're not omniscient. So the more information we get from the public, the better decisions we can make. And we have to cast the votes, but more information for me is always better. I can be a little bit of an information glutton, but I do really like to have more input and really hear more directly from people and, and citizens in every corner of the city. Um, so I, I just don't like this language, the way it stands. And I would be comfortable taking out that clause after coronavirus fiscal recovery fund. And then there's a comma to just strike the rest of that sentence to the period. And the funds will be then voted on and appropriated in the direction of the mayor and city council. Um, I also, I, I voted for the task force and I am eager really to hear those recommendations um, as we go forward um, about how we can make the most efficacious, the most impactful investments um, in order to really not just recover to where we were, but to build back better, I think is the phrase. It's starting to already sound like a platitude, but really, how do we do that? How do we, how do we really see a stronger Pittsburgh, stronger communities than we had in January of 2020? Um, I think we do have that opportunity. I'm really eager for that engagement, but um, but I don't think that hinges on that clause being in there. Um, and so I'm comfortable striking it out. I'm comfortable putting it in a whereas clause. I'll keep chewing on this. Suggestion from you, Councilman Lavelle with recommendations by. Um, but I, I, I don't, I'm not comfortable with the language as it stands. So I'll just stop my comments there. I appreciate it.
Councilman, Councilman Gross, if I may, I know there's been a lot of things discussed. Um, I think the first thing I, I want to address is the intent. So the intent regardless of what the language says, I'm happy to work through any uh, changes uh, that you all want to uh, make. The intent of this was to provide counsel with a recommendation, never to hinder any uh, any of counsel's power with the allocation of it. Equity is, was always intended to be uh, embedded in all of the decisions and, and recommendations that, that we would make. Um, and then to Councilman Strasburger's point about public outreach, um, yeah, it's a work in progress that, that we continue to try to strive to get better at for the budgeting process. We've been doing capital budget outreach for a couple of years now. Last year was the first year for the operating budget outreach. And I think, you know, COVID and, and working remote kind of threw a, threw a wrench into those things uh, because of different challenges that we were facing. Um, but I'm happy to report that this year we are taking a more proactive approach to the operating budget outreach by kicking off uh, the, the public engagement uh, this week or, or early in May instead of so late in the process like we did last year. So we are continually making strides to be better, um, to, to gain better input. Um, and then it, as it pertains to this particular trust fund, you know, the intent was again, always to provide recommendations to city council or public hearings so that we could gain a public input and then allocate the funds via voting.
Thank you. Um, to that point, may it also be worth sa- simply saying with recommendations by the public and the Joint Recovery Task Force. Which allows for all those public hearings. So we're still on second round. We have Councilman Wilson followed by Councilman Kraus.
I'm gonna mute. Thank you, Chair. I want to um, you know, just say that, you know, keeping this language in there um, with the task force really sets the charter for, for how this money will be spent. And section six of the ta- of the task force that we already voted on sets that charter. And it says the Black Pittsburgh Matters Strategic Investment Principles are designed to increase funding to black people, black organizations, and black businesses in black communities. So it talks about the prioritization of the investments uh, in a community-based violence and crime prevention, investments in, in the economy, investments in the uh, capacity of local, community-based and faith-based organizations and black communities provided with, provide them and with a sufficient funding. Uh, so it continues to go on and sets that charter for how this task force will go about addressing uh, the equity issue. And so we're going to vote on this in a very public way. And if there are amendments to what's being recommended, then we can, you know, amend as necessary, but removing this language uh, that, you know, currently includes the language of the task force removes our ability to you know, prioritize what I just read off, but I didn't read off word for word, but I tried to just sum it up loosely. Um, but it does, you know, set the charter for how the money was, will be spent. So I just wanted to say my piece with that.
Thank you. Councilman Kraus?
Yeah, thank you very much. So uh, on the topic of equity, uh, what is troubling to me is that we are attempting to address the issue of equity by creating what appears to be an inequitable process by the concentration of power and not an equal distribution of voice uh, is the exact opposite of equity and inclusion. And so I continue to argue that language must reflect uh, the inclusion, the equal, equal equity, equal inclusion of each and every member of council in the consideration and distribution of the funds. So i- if I may, I'd like to call our budget director to the table, Bill Urbannick. He has a suggestion which I think might satisfy uh, members. If, Bill, are you here?
Yes, I am. Just getting myself unmuted.
No, thanks very much. So, so uh, would you like to share what your recommendations are, which I'm hoping and I do believe could be satisfying to members of council?
Yes, I, I believe so. Um, I had also sent this over to uh, to Kevin and to uh, Councilman Gross as well too. The um, basically uh, from a technical standpoint uh, is what legislation regarding the creation of a trust fund and implementation of the trust fund does. The only thing that we need do within there is to uh, make sure that we're abiding by the uh, US Department of Treasury's guidelines. So that's the body of the bill. However, intent is always established within the whereas sections of the bill. Um, so my suggestion would be, and I can send this to all members here briefly. Where a city council will consider recommendations in its deliberations by the Joint Pittsburgh Recovery Task Force, consisting of representatives of the office of mayor, president of city council, uh, president pro temp and chairman committee on finance and law, and just consider those allocations through a lens of equity. And you would add that. And then of course, uh, in section two, you would uh, do the recommendation of Councilman Gross there, and that's to delete the section. Uh, the uh, the sentence that says that's recommended by the Joint Pittsburgh Recovery Task Force, consisting of representatives of the office of mayor, president of city council, uh, president pro temp and chairman and committee on finance and law. Uh, so leaving in the funds will then be voted on uh, and appropriated at the direction of the city council and mayor.
So Bill, could you revisit the, the um, the uh, argument you make about the purpose of and intent of the legislation that's really uh, to um, uh, solidify uh, the, the monies being uh, deposited, considered and expended uh, by guidelines that are established by the US Department of Treasury Program Administration of State and Local Coronavirus uh, Fiscal Recovery Fund. Right? I mean, that is the, that is the purpose of, of the legislation that we're considering today.
That's correct.
And that's, that's the meat and potatoes of, of it.
That's correct. The legal name in which it must be expended has to be in those uh, in accordance to the treasury guidelines.
We can apologize. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I, I think that uh, regardless of whether you have the, the additional line in there or not, uh, council will always be able to uh, to do allocations as some council does uh, at its own discretion. Uh, you have the power of purse. But uh, it's, it's sort of unnecessary to have that line in there when you're trying to establish um, uh, the
Guidelines for
Guidelines. And well, and not only that, but you're, you're also trying to uh, establish intent, which should be uh, emphasized in as whereas sections.
And that's exactly where I wanted to go uh, after that, is that we can establish, we can establish intent in the guidelines, which is the per- the whereas clause, which is the, the intended purpose of, of whereas clause to establish uh, intent.
Right.
So, and I think that works well that way. I, I ju- you know, I'm not arguing that there is intent or purpose to um, uh, to, to limit the equal uh, consideration and distribution of funds by council. But we are writing contract here and contraverbage is important in contract. And I think it's important to, that we be clear uh, as to how um, the monies are um, received and deposited, understood. And then the, the intent of how we wish to consider uh, those funds and the distribution or allocation of those funds. And I just, I worry that the argument of equity is being lost or compromised in the argument that we should not have an equitable process for the consideration of the distribution of the funds, even though that I don't believe that to be the intent. I believe the language can lead us uh, or, or lead one to believe that that is the intent. And I just want to clarify that in, in contract, that it's important that we have uh, a, a clear understanding um, of um, of how these will be received, considered, and ultimately distributed. That's, and that is my concern. And, and you know, and, and I will offer this as well too. I do understand that councils are, are um, formed uh, with odd numbers of three, five, seven, nine, 11 for a purpose. And I do understand the argument of five votes and you can move anything. But you still leave four people behind. And so as far as I'm concerned, you're leaving just about half of the representation behind. And that has never, ever been my style of leadership. Uh, it never would be my style of leadership in that the uh, each and every one of us ha- have, have earned the right uh, to be here and to have equal voice in um, in all matters. Uh, and uh, and so I'll make that argument in the argument of equity. We, each and every one of us are equal, co-equal members of the body. And it's important to always remember and always consider uh, the uh, the um, uh, the um, the process by which we got here and um, uh, the right uh, that we have to be included in all conversations, uh, especially budgetary matters and the uh, distribution of those, those funds. So um, I hope that would be a good compromise for members uh, as we move this piece of legislation forward. And I'd be very interested to hear uh, what other members think about the recommendation from our budget director. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other members? Second round, Councilman Coghill?
Yes. Uh, I'm not on the task force, but uh, I'm going to give my recommendations anyway. And I just wanted to point out, you know, I feel like everybody's under the frame of mind that this is some windfall that we can use for whatever projects that everybody's dreaming up. Um, to me, I think first and foremost, we have to secure the employees that we didn't hire back um, to keep the employees that we do have. I think we, you know, are short ended in many departments. PLI jumps out at me as, as the first one. I'd like to see more employees there. And I just wanted to state that, you know, if I were on the task force, I would be saying, you know, let's not be so quick to spend this money and think about whatever projects everyone's thinking about. Uh, let's take care of our, our house first. You know, we are going to be lacking the amusement tax and parking tax. That's going to be ongoing. So you know, we're going to have shortfalls and this money is set aside for that and should be used for that. Now, in the end, if we have, you know, 20 million, 10 million, however many dollars left, um, then we talk about projects and things that we could use this money for to make the city a better place. So, okay, well, that's my recommendation. Thanks.
Thank you. Um, just for clarity, Councilman Coghill, your recommendation is what we legally have to do? Um, any, any other members?
I'm sorry, the Councilman Lavelle, say that again, it's
Your recommendation per federal guidelines, what we have to do. The, this money has to first and foremost be spent on shoring up our deficits. Like that's where money has to go. And then whatever money is left is what the task force said. We would then take a racial equity lens and spend those dollars accordingly.
Okay, so in, I guess in the opinion of the task forces, the task Okay, so in, I guess in the opinion of the task forces, the task force is not needed for, until we see what the extra monies are. That's what the task force will be deliberating on or recommending to the other council members. Is that right?
The task force will look at all the dollars, recommend on how to shore up per federal guidelines, how to shore up our current budget, how to address the deficit for next year as well, because we will have one for next year. And then whatever is left over on how to spend those dollars. And then that recommendation comes to council and council does what we always do. We deliberate, we decide, and ultimately we choose on how to spend those resources.
Okay.
So Mr. Chair.
Uh, yeah, third round, Councilman Cross.
Thank you. Customer Burgess, I'd be curious to, to hear what your thoughts are about uh, the suggestion by our um, budget director. Can you be, um, can you be satisfied with um, um, the argument for uh, the equitable consideration and distribution of the funds being part of the whereas clause as opposed to uh, the meat of the legislation, which is really about how we are legally obligated to deposit the federally received dollars.
Again, I'm not the author of this, so I'll, I'll defer to Kevin. To be honest with you, this is just a mechanical way. We, you know, this is a mechanical, this, this trust fund is simply mechanical. And I think that, you know, I, I'm embedded in it, not in it. The trust fund already exists. So I mean, the, the, uh, we already passed the, 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 um, the task force. So you know, I think this, we're just talking mechanically about opening a banking account. Really, that's really all this is. We're just opening a bank account. So, but I didn't write it, so I, I really can't. I will go with the majority of council. I like the idea of it being in. I just think it makes, it's like, um, Wendy Kobe used to always say, it's suspenders in a belt, right? She was always saying when I, we did the um, Home Rule Charter Amendment for uh, residency. Um, it wasn't needed, but we were just putting a spit, a suspender on it, you know, but I'm not, again, I didn't write it. This is not a, a hill I'm willing to die on. I'm willing to, to do whatever the members of council do. I'll pass it and be, be satisfied. I think the pro, we've already established the process, so I don't think this changes the process. It just makes people comfortable with, with the trust fund. So I would defer to Kevin, whatever, but I'm not, does that make sense? I'm, I'm comfortable either way.
Yeah. Director, could you, would you be comfortable with the recommendation by our budget director uh, to include that in the whereas clauses and, and keep the uh, the intent of the legislation just a little tighter?
I'm comfortable with that. Like Councilman Burgess said, I mean, this is, this is just setting up the, the account to hold the funds. Uh, the, the process itself um, was solidified with the task force and all of that. Um, and again, that the intent was never to, to hinder any part of the, of the process with the language of this, of this legislation.
So then, Mr. Chair, with your permission and the recommendation of our, our budget directors, uh, could I offer up the suggestion of uh, Budget Director Bill Urbannick to be an amendment?
Yes, um, just for clarity, can you state what the amendment is?
Be happy to. Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, I will read from uh, Mr. Urbannick's um, uh, email to all members. Uh, we would amend by adding in the whereas clause, whereas city council will consider, and Madam Clerk, I won't email this to you, and I, you know, I don't, you know, uh, excuse me, amend by adding where a city council will consider recommendations in its deliberations by the Joint Pittsburgh Recovery Task Force, consisting of representatives of the Office of the Mayor, President of City Council, President Pro Temp uh, and Chairman Committee of Finance and Law, and to consider allocation through a lens of equity. And then, excuse me, in the legislation as argued by what we heard a public comment today, as well as Councilwoman Gross and myself, we would strike uh, after recovery fund comma, we would strike verbiage until uh, we reach the end of that sentence, which ends with finance and law, and begin again with funds will then be voted and appropriated at the direction of city council and the mayor. And thanks, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members, for your time and your consideration. And I'll offer that up as an amendment and ask for a second, please. Thank you. Thank you, members.
All those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The bill is amended. Any discussion on the bill as amended? Seeing none, all those in favor of the bill, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended.
Thanks, everybody. Appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. That moves us on to Bill fourteen forty-one.
Bill fourteen forty-one, resolution authorizing pursuant to chapter two ten of the city code, the mayor and director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to accept a donation from the Buncher Company in an amount of one hundred forty thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents for a portion of the costs associated with installing a traffic signal at Fifteenth Street and Smallman in the Strip District. And further amending resolution number six forty-seven entitled Resolution Adopting and Approving the Twenty Twenty-One Capital Budget and the Twenty Twenty-One CDBG Program and the Twenty Twenty-One through Twenty Twenty-Six Capital Improvement Program by increasing Smallman Street Reconstruction by one hundred forty thousand, nine hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
May I briefly?
Councilman Gross?
Thank you. Um, so I'm supportive of any pedestrian safety improvements in the strip district and, and definitely in the small man corridor. Um, unfortunately, we have already spent uh, many millions of dollars. There've been millions of dollars of multimodal grants and R caps in the blocks, um, starting from sixteenth to twenty-first that council received now over the years related to the terminal project and the um, buildings across the street. And it's still dangerous. Um, so we have a lot of work ahead of us. I remind council, there have been two fatalities at twenty-first and Smallman during the daytime. Uh, it's just still not safe there. Um, uh, later this agenda, you will also see the easement at twenty-first Street that we've been holding for a week. I have been talking with the developers, the church at Saint Stanislaus, the um, kind of every, the, the strip district neighbors, because there's so many moving parts with so many different sites and construction projects that what we really need is a stronger design plan from Domi that they have now been working on for years, but we just don't have it in hand to know where we're making these changes, whether it's going to add to safety, be neutral, or even decrease safety in the strip. But I'm supportive of this project and, and thank you for letting me put it in context, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. We now need a motion to approve our invoices.
They're moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Invoices are approved. We now need a motion to approve the P cards.
They're moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? P cards are approved. That takes us to our Public uh, Safety Services Committee, which is chaired by Mr. O'Connor, who is not with us today. Um, we have one deferred paper, Bill ten eighty-seven, and we would like to have a motion to hold for two weeks.
A motion hold two weeks.
Second.
Okay, let me, let me
Let the clerk read the bill first, sorry.
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 Bill ten eighty-seven, ordinance supplement in the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinance is Title One, Administrative Article Three, Organization Chapter One Sixteen, Department of Public Safety, to add a new subsection one sixteen, one seven, provision on the execution of no knock warrants for requiring all city police officers when executed any warrant to physically knock and announce the presence of police before entering a premises.
Motion hold two weeks. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? It will be held two weeks. Our new papers on the Public Safety Services Committee, uh, Bill fourteen forty-three.
Bill fourteen forty-three, resolution, amending resolution number six thirty-two, authorizing the mayor and director of public safety to enter on behalf of the city into an amended agreement with purpose systems for installation of a new fire station, alerting system, and related support services. Said agreement shall be in a form approved by the city solicitor and shall be at a cost not to exceed two million, seven hundred sixty-three thousand, eight hundred twenty-seven dollars and fifty-one cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing Nope. Okay.
Chief, if he wishes to speak, I don't want to show him the effort to be here. So just want to o- offer him the opportunity if he wishes. Morning, Chief.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity. Uh, no, I do not wish to speak. I just uh, wanted to be here in case anyone had any questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fourteen forty-four.
Bill fourteen forty-four, resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Safety to execute relevant agreement to receive grant funding from the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquencies, Community Violence Intervention, to fund patrol officers' participation and related activities in the City of Pittsburgh Youth Connections Program in an amount not to exceed one hundred twenty-five thousand, three hundred sixteen dollars and eighty cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Question? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fourteen forty-five.
Bill fourteen forty-five, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter on behalf of the city into a grant agreement with every town support fund in an amount not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars for expansion of the city's gun violence prevention program.
Motion to approve.
Second discussion?
Yes. Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, being that my, uh, well, throughout the city, the, the gun violence has, has increased recently. Uh, I am curious about the, you know, on this bill, is there someone that can give us a briefing?
Yeah, hello, this is Director Schmidt from Public Safety. Um, so this bill is uh, Everytown USA. They are a gun violence reduction uh, program, national level organization. Um, they are providing this grant to help support our gun violence unit. Um, the intent behind this is they will provide us with a analyst that will be able to enter data and maintain statistics a little better for us. So we can continue to review uh, where the gun violence is happening as well as recording weapons that are found, discarded, uh, seized, that kind of stuff.
Okay, um, thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Uh, how, how will they specifically be different than our crime analysis unit that we currently have? Like what type of report? What do we expect?
Um, their reports will be specifically just for the gun violence itself. Um, they will work with our GVI unit. Or, sorry, not GVI, the gun violence unit to um, specify, you know, yeah, be specialized just for gun violence versus, you know, our current crime analysts, which are already a little short-staffed right now. They kind of look at things overall. Uh, these, this analyst will look specifically for um, gun-related activities. Folks that are involved with those gun-related activities and try to help track a little better. Um, it's also, like I said, to help make sure we're maintaining and keeping up with the database for weapons.
Is the, is this for a salary or is this for, you know, multiple people? What's
It's, it's a two-year salary as well as supplies, benefits, et cetera.
Does this come out of the Stop the Violence Trust Fund?
No, this is a grant from Everytown, USA.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I see that.
Okay.
After I open the bill. Okay. All right. Thanks. Thanks for answering these questions.
Thank you. Any further, any other members? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Public Works Committee chaired by Mr. Coghill. Um, the fur paper, Bill thirteen, thirteen sixty-seven.
Bill thirteen sixty-seven, ordinance extinguishing in easement in twenty-foot strip of real property adjacent to the easterly side of Twenty First Street, sixty feet in width between Smallman and Railroad in the second ward.
Motion for a brief discussion.
Second.
Uh, you know, Councilwoman Gross, I will turn it over to you. I know you had concerns about this bill and uh, where are we at?
Yeah, I appreciate your patience. I know Councilman Coghill has been eager to, to get this moving, but I did talk to the developer and the attorney and uh, this neighborhood organization, but I haven't heard back from Saint Stanislaus. And um, they have, they, they reached out, as I mentioned last week, um, and for now, for lack of trying, we just have not been able to connect. And um, there's, there are a lot of moving parts at that intersection, which is, this is at the intersection that I mentioned that has seen fatalities. There's a lot of construction. There's even some litigation. Um, uh, it's just, you know, a few feet away between another building and what's happening in the right of way here. I think we're going to be fine, honestly, after hearing from, from most parties. But I didn't, you know, Domi says they're comfortable, but they really don't have a design. Um, and they, after this many years of meetings and conversations about this very important section of the strip, we are, and, and budget allocations to them to do more design around it. Um, everyone I've spoken to is eager to get that mobility study that council funded for two hundred thousand dollars some three years ago, um, and has, is completed, but not published. To be, so that we don't have to have questions and concerns and, and anxiety from all of the different parties for every single thing. You've seen so many bills and so many things come across um, our agendas between bump outs and new sidewalks and property lines changing and all of these things that if we had that in hands, then there wouldn't have to be so much community concern over each individual item. So I just say that with a, um, to humbly request a little more patience just to make sure that if, when we do this, there won't be some grievance um, from some of the near neighbors um, or concerns about the design of the roadway. So um, I, 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 I'm pretty sure we'll be able to get through um, to Saint Stanislaus and their attorney um, uh, shortly. So I'm gonna um, just uh, humbly, humbly request a motion for one more week. Mr. Coghill?
Yes, so Councilwoman Gross, you know, I have a great deal of respect for, you know, what you do for your district, whether it's protecting green space or you know, doing with high traffic and dangerous intersections like this. You have a very, very busy, different district than I think most of us do. At the same time, I do respect a contractor's, you know, point of view where they want to get the project
No, there is nothing, nothing designed under, there's, I, I asked that question very directly yesterday. I said, this is no emergency. I said, no, this is no emergency. No, nothing is about to be built.
Okay, so, so you would like to hold for one more week, and you're confident that by next week you'll have it resolved?
Yes.
I just asked for you to make the motion, okay?
I understand your perspective, but uh, that is not this situation.
Okay.
Thank you. I did motion to, motion to hold one week.
Is there a second?
No one's going to second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
All right, just kidding.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill be held one week. Uh, new papers, Bill fourteen twenty-six.
Bill fourteen twenty-six, resolution for the amending resolution number nine oh eight entitled Adopting and Approving the Twenty-Eleven Capital Budget and the Twenty-Eleven and Twenty-Eleven CDBG Program and approving the Twenty-Eleven through Twenty-Sixteen Capital Improvement Program by reducing slow by reducing slow failure remediation by nine thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-four cents and increasing James Street steps by nine thousand four hundred seventy-six dollars and fifty-four cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fourteen twenty-seven.
Bill fourteen twenty-seven resolution for the amending resolution number seven ninety-six entitled adopting and approving the twenty-fourteen capital budget and the twenty-fourteen CDBG program and approving the twenty-fourteen fourteen through twenty-nineteen capital improvement program by reducing West Ohio Street Bridge by two thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty-four cents and increasing James steps, James Street steps by two thousand five hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty-four cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fourteen twenty-eight.
Bill fourteen twenty-eight resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Public Works to apply for grant funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnership Program to provide funding for the West End Playground Reconstruction Project. The grant proposal includes a request of one hundred thousand dollars with a local match of thirty-three thousand dollars to be funded from the twenty-twenty-two City of Pittsburgh's operating budget in the form of in-kind work and sixty-seven thousand dollars funded from the twenty-twenty-two capital budget. In the event the grant is awarded, this resolution provides for an agreement and expenditures not to exceed two hundred thousand dollars.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fourteen twenty-nine.
Bill fourteen twenty-nine resolution authorizing and directing the issuing of a warrant to the Western Pennsylvania Conservancy in an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars in full and final payment for the street tree planting in the city on behalf of the Tree Vitalize Pittsburgh Partnership.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fourteen thirty.
Bill fourteen thirty resolution granting unto Dimitrio Pantrino their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense two new projecting signs at eighteen hundred Smallman Street, second ward, seventh council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fourteen thirty-one.
Bill fourteen thirty-one resolution granting unto DCO Nicola their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense a new awning at two, two zero, three one Penn Avenue, second ward, seventh council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fourteen thirty-two.
Bill fourteen thirty-two resolution granting unto Urban Pittsburgh Downtown Hotel Company their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense two new projecting signs at four oh five Wood Street, first ward, sixth council district.
Motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Question? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fourteen thirty-three.
Bill fourteen thirty-three resolution granting unto New Alliance Federal Credit Union their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense a new canopy at thirty-seven oh nine Butler Street, sixth ward, seventh council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fourteen thirty-four.
Bill fourteen thirty-four resolution granting unto P N Street Bank where your successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense a projecting sign at fifty-eight ten Forbes Avenue, fourteenth ward, fifth council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fourteen thirty-five.
Bill fourteen thirty-five resolution granting unto Christina Jurcic their successors and assigns the privilege and license to construct, maintain and use at their own cost and expense in enclosed porch along the side of her house at fifty-nine twenty-four Elgin Street, eleventh ward, seventh council district.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fourteen thirty-six.
Bill fourteen thirty-six resolution providing for a reimbursement agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for costs associated with the transportation demand management project through the congestion mitigation and air quality improvement program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fourteen thirty-seven.
Bill fourteen thirty-seven resolution amending resolution number two twenty-two, two, two, one authorizing the mayor and director of Mobility and Infrastructure to apply for a grant from the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County Gaming Economic Development tourism fund in the amount of four hundred forty-three thousand, six hundred fifty-nine dollars to decrease the grant award to one hundred thousand dollars to provide funding for shady side streetscape improvements.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. Bill fourteen fifty-three.
Bill fourteen fifty-three resolution for the amending resolution number seven seventy-two of twenty-sixteen entitled adopting and approving the twenty-seventeen capital budget and the twenty-seventeen through twenty-twenty-two capital improvement program to correct the accounts that twenty thousand dollars is being transferred from the Beachview War Memorial Sidewalks deliverable.
Motion approved. Brief discussion.
Second.
Now, if you would, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to thank, uh, Director Ricks. We took State Center of Fontana had gotten us beautiful new monuments for our memorial park in Beachview. And I was up there on an unrelated matter with Director Ricks and right where the new memorial was going, you know, the sidewalks were just all decayed and broken up. So it was at her suggestion and of course I jumped all over it. So, so it really did make a big difference in the, you know, to have a brand-new sidewalk around this beautiful new memorial that we have. And I'm encouraging everybody from the neighborhood to come out on Memorial Day. We're gonna have a nice little ribbon cutting there and it's really beautiful, very well done. Just wanted to thank Director Ricks. That's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Human Resources Committee chaired by Councilman Kraus. We have one bill, Bill fourteen thirty-nine.
Bill fourteen thirty-nine resolution authorizing the mayor and director of Human Resources and Civil Service to enter into a professional services agreement and or contract with Community College of Allegheny County for the purpose of providing customized application preparation training for public safety position applicants and services associated with civil service exam preparation and training providing for the payment of costs not to exceed fifty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars over three years.
Motion to approve. Second.
Question? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstention, please. I work for the Community College and just because I work for the college, I abstain on any matters concerning them.
So noted.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, if I may, I just want to thank Director Manuel for being here, uh, and staying with us and I just want to recognize that you made the effort to be here, uh, if council had questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Bill received the favoritized recommendation. That takes us to our Land Use and Economic Development Committee, which is chaired by Councilman Wilson. Uh, first new paper, Bill fourteen forty-eight.
Bill fourteen forty-eight resolution approving a new institutional master plan under the Pittsburgh Colt Title Nine, Zoning Article Two, Chapter nine oh five, Section nine oh five oh three D and Article seven, Chapter nine twenty-two, Section nine twenty-two, one, two, E for University of Pittsburgh name institutional master plan dated April twenty twenty-one on property zone EMI Educational Medical Institution District fourth and fifth wards, council districts number three, six and eight.
Motion to call, hold for cable cast public hearing. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bill be held for a cable cast public hearing. Bill fourteen forty-nine.
Bill fourteen forty-nine resolution authorizing the mayor and director of city planning to receive seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars for grant funding per grant amendment between the city and the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources executed by nineteen of twenty twenty to aid in obtaining title reports for the South Side Park Master Plan and further providing for issuance of a warrant in favor of title wave in an amount of fifteen thousand, five hundred dollars for title searches of South Side Park.
Motion to approve.
Second. Brief discussion, if I can, please. So, uh, I, I just want to take a moment to recognize friends of South Side Park uh, and the efforts. It really is a, um, sort of an in-house, uh, very, um, uh, sort of self-assigned role that they've taken on. They tenderly care for, uh, for the park and expend unbelievable amounts of, uh, personal time, uh, to contribute to the park and, uh, I, I just think it's so very important to, to, uh, recognize and thank them and, uh, I ask all members to, to please support. This is a wonderful, um, uh, project and the dollars are, are well-deserved and well-needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Innovation, Performance and Asset Management Committee chaired by Councilman Strasburger. Two new papers, first being Bill fourteen forty-six.
Bill fourteen forty-six resolution authorizing the mayor and director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into a one-year agreement with Zen City with the option to renew for another year. Zen City is an SaaS which analyzes data from social media, city hotlines and other relevant sources and provides local government stakeholders with detailed, real-time insights about citizens' sentiments during COVID nineteen. The mayor's office requested this tool as part of its ongoing COVID nineteen response. The cost will not exceed thirty thousand dollars in the first year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Like some discussion, if you don't mind.
Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you. Um, so I'm a little concerned about spending money to analyze people's social media feeds. Flat out. Um, we know, for example, that these can be used as part of policing and overpolicing. Um, there's a real slippery slope about, um, us expending dollars to call, as it were, um, information with software from people's social media feeds. I'm guessing most members do look at social media and do, you know, have constituents who follow them on social media and who, you know, give us information and opinions on, you know, policy topics of the day, news topics of the day. But this is a different level and I don't know if Councilwoman Strasburger wants to speak to it or someone from the administration. I'm, I'm very concerned about using public dollars on funds that really seem to me to be, um, uh, there's a possibility of abuse in either kind of privacy concerns or targeting concerns. Um, so this has been a concern in other cities, certainly around policing and overpolicing, and I, I would like to hear somebody speak to that from the administration. Do we know who's here, Councilwoman Strasburger?
We do have Todd Smith here and I'm not sure if Molly Otter is also here, but Todd Smith certainly is here to speak to this bill.
Yeah.
I see Todd there.
Good morning.
Thank you. Good to see you. If you could just identify yourself for our listeners and, um, and, uh, give us some background, if you don't mind.
Sure. My name's Todd Smith. I'm the Digital Community Specialist with the Department of Innovation Performance. And I just wanted to address your privacy concerns because IMP and the mayor's office also want to make sure that we're preserving the concern, the privacy data of our constituents. And I want to reassure you that Zen City is pulling publicly available data. So it also scrubs any personal data related to that data that enters, um, the platform. So we have no, um, we're not able to look at people's profiles. We don't know who the actual people are. We just focus on the content and the engagement on the post.
So how is this arrangement structured then? Um, what is it doing for you?
Well, it's a public engagement tool. Um, it expands the perspective of the conversation that's happening around city services. And it allows us to gather that feedback, not just by residents, but also new sources, community groups, and then it displays and parses that data into a dashboard.
And so is the dashboard publicly available for everyone to see?
It is not.
Why not?
Uh, it's mostly used for internal purposes. Um, you know, it helps aggregate the data in a way that like helps us understand what specific topics or issues our communities are concerned about. And then we use that in terms of our communication outreach, um, moving forward.
Can you give me an example? I mean, you say, so you're already using it? Or you?
Yes, the mayor's office had requested this in twenty twenty during COVID. There was an exponential increase in social media chatter. There was no physical meetings where people can come and interface with city government. So online government went online.
Did I, did I have, did I ask you these questions last time? I'm sorry, I don't remember.
I believe there was a different procurement mechanism. Um, so I can't really speak to that right now.
So it was not in front of council before?
Correct.
So you've been using it, but we haven't had a public discussion about it?
Like I said, that's, um, there was a different mechanism that I'm not, that I can't speak to. But, you know, it was approved and went through like, I assume, all the right channels in order for it to be procured.
But we don't know what the channels were. And can you like show us the dashboard?
Can I show you the dashboard?
Yeah.
Sure. Wow, we're getting interactive. I like it. One second. Just logging in here. All right, I'm going to share my screen right now. I have that permission. It looks like I do. Okay, can you see?
Yes.
Okay, so this is what the dashboard looks like. And essentially, as I mentioned, it's aggregating social media data, news resources, news channels, community chatter, and it's, um, parsed into data that falls into this dashboard.
So you can ask it questions about things like, how do you feel? How does the city feel about paving that street or what if, what are they saying about?
So this is an.
Give me an example.
This is not an engagement tool. This is not an engagement tool as much as this is a tool that analyzes the social media chatter. So it's very hard to go onto Twitter or Facebook.
I see police policy change and reform interactions are up four thousand.
Yes. So what they'll do is the technology that they have, and just like a very quick background, Zen City is a company made up of people who worked in government. So they understand how governments design and the different services. So they take this data that they're able to pull in from these different platforms. And then they're able to use some type of AI technology that filters these into topics that are related to service delivery. Um, so human relations, public safety, local economy, um, transportation. And this is all interactive here. In addition to kind of just like the overall chatter and the time, you can also create projects. And projects are things that just come up or that are important in your community. So when we looked at, um, right last summer, we had the George Floyd protests. We're able to look at what the chatter is and understand, you know, how people are feeling about it. And again, you know, people have not been able to come into city government to voice their opinions about what's going on in our city. But they do use social media. So this is like a nice way to capture a holistic view of how people feel about things that the city are involved in. Um, we have winter operations that are also here, and we know that like when there's issues with, you know, you know, streets not being plowed, you know, people go to social media. And this can help with our response in future years about how we want to be more proactive with our communication when it comes to things about winter operation. Um, in addition, it like parses like certain words and stuff that are, you know, keywords that are popular. Um, it can break down official channels, so stuff that comes from city government, from unofficial, which could be community groups or news outlets. Um, and like I said, this is all interactive. And as you were talking about, um, privacy and stuff, like this is a good example where-
That's, so that is an individual tweet from someone.
This is a Facebook post, but as I was mentioning, they scrub the personal information from here. They're just focusing on the content.
But you get to tell, it, it, people post about their pets, people post funny cat videos. I don't see those here. So you must have asked it something. You must have given it parameters.
So the parameters are designed by the company itself. Zen City works specifically with government agencies. So it's a bespoke tool. And, um, that's what's nice about working with them is that we don't have to explain what they do. They understand it. And they've designed a software that is almost turnkey. And everything is kind of set up. And over time, you know, like I said, we can request specific reports about ideas or things in our neighborhoods. Um, it also provides an insights feed, which are literally, um, qualitative reports from analysts at Zen City that provides more of a kind of story view of what all the data means. So like one PGH plan, right, which was just released, like this talked a lot about how there was a lot of implicit buy-in about the plan. But people felt very negative that, you know, these nonprofits, um, you know, we're still eluding, or not eluding, um, you know, still felt like they should be paying their fair share of taxes. And, you know, that's like what the tool does. It's, um, very powerful use in technology to make it easier for us so we don't have to analyze it. And the mayor's office, I know in the second year is trying to roll this out to more departments because they think it could be useful to be proactive with our communication, understanding when we launch initiatives to understand public engagement. It goes beyond like the ten people who might show up and voice, you know, their opinions about a specific service or issue.
Can you give me examples of other cities that are using this? I'm, I'm still a little-
Yeah.
I'm a little uncomfortable with this.
Philadelphia, Foster City, um, you know, they have over, I think, three hundred municipalities they work with. Um, I think Boston, um, New York. I mean, this is a very big company that, um, has proven themselves such that, you know, more people are using it because of how helpful it is, like I said, to be proactive, to be able to, um, you know, increase the perspective around public engagement and to help be a data-driven company that helps us, uh, make data-driven decisions.
We're not a company, so we're not going to call ourselves a company, but still to be, um, to, to, I understand the, the administration's emphasis on being data-driven. Um, I'm curious how those other cities are using it. It still seems a little strange to me that this has just been housed. I think, did you say in the mayor's office or a different, what department has been using it?
So this has been in the mayor's office, and they've been using this part of their COVID-19 responses.
Let me see. So that's the kind of cover page. I, I would like a little more time to, to look into the best practices around these things. I, again, I, my, my reaction is to say, better be safe than sorry. Um, it's, I see that the people's identifiers are removed, but that was still a kind of verbatim screen from an individual's Facebook post. Um, and I can think of a lot of different questions that I don't know if members want to take the time today to answer, which is like, excuse me for the kitchen noises. I don't know if you guys can hear the background noises here. Um, that's, um, are, you know, how do you know they're coming from a city resident and not a Westmoreland County resident? I just, I just have a lot of questions. So I, I'm not really comfortable supporting this today. I, I'm interested in, in learning more, um, and maybe having more feedback on it before I would support it. Um, but I, uh, I'll leave it at that and see if other members have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. There are other members for discussion? Councilman Coghill?
Yes, um, you know, I kind of tend to agree with Councilwoman Gross. Um, I don't follow social media. I don't rely on it to give me information that I need. I just walk out my door and I feel like the people let me know. And I feel like the council members know, you know, the issues and what the importance of the issue is of the day. Um, certainly we have, you know, three minutes for people to call in every morning, which they do. And I believe they, you know, voice their opinions on whatever the subject matter is. And that gives, gives me a good feel as to what's going on in other parts of the city. Um, you know, how much are we talking here as far as, uh, I, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me. What, what was the amount?
Thousand.
How much?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty thousand dollars. Okay. Well, it's not a, not going to exactly break the bank, but I am hesitant to, you know, for, for once we do start collecting this information, Mr. Smith, um, who analyzes it? And so, so, so it actually occupies somebody else in order just to take it in, analyze it, decide what we're going to do with it, kind of creates a job I feel like the city doesn't need, but, you know, for thirty thousand dollars, I'll support it.
So the tool analyzes the data itself. That's what's the beauty about it. Um, this has not taken up any operational support on our end. Um, and that's what makes it nice is that it gives you the insight you need right away when you're looking for them.
Hmm. So it's really just a tool for whether it be the mayor or us to get on and say, well, look, this is what the city is thinking about this today.
Well, it just also addressing the fact that, you know, especially since COVID, um, online engagement with government has gone up exponentially. And we don't have the tools in order to understand the scope of that conversation. We're talking about hundreds, millions, billions of accounts, right? Obviously not in Pittsburgh. So this is just keeping up with the times. And we think this tool, and again, IMP is just implementing the tool. And Molly Onifer, I think, just joined as well. So if you have some further questions, she could speak about like the actual application. Um, but again, I just think that, um, you know, I don't know, Molly, do you want to come on and talk about your experience with it? I'm sorry if I should put it in.
Sure. I'm, I'm happy to take specific questions as well. Um, my apologies. I was at a press conference and just had to find a place to park so I could join in. Um, you know, the way that I sort of think about this, um, platform is, um, you know, not every resident or, you know, person in the city, business owner, stakeholder in the city is familiar with three-one-one or knows that they can come to council meetings. But most people, um, are on social media. So, you know, a lot of, as we're seeing an increase, as Todd said, in folks using social media to take, uh, their concerns, their questions, you know, issues in their neighborhood, this platform has given us an opportunity to, um, not just hear the loudest people on social media, but to see how folks are feeling. It's also given us the opportunity to identify additional, um, neighborhood-based concerns. So, you know, if there's a park maintenance concern and there's some chatter about it and, um, Observatory Hill or the River View Park area, we're able to flag that, look at what folks are saying, and then, you know, develop an appropriate response with public works, um, just as one example. So that's another function of this, but I'm happy to take questions from, from the council members.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I guess I still have the four. I will, uh, you know, relinquish the four. I don't really have any further questions. Again, the price tag is right. Um, you know, I'm not a big believer it will help benefit, you know, the city in any which way other than just more information that, you know, I'd rather put, even though it's a miniscule amount, thirty thousand dollars, and we're talking about government. Um, is that a one time? Is that for a year? What is the thirty thousand dollars used for?
That would just be for a year, and we have the option to continue the contract at that price point up to three years.
Hmm. And we're paying the company who analyzes it, and that's where the thirty thousand dollars is going.
Correct.
Okay.
The vendors, Zen City.
Okay, that's it for me.
Thank you. Any other members for discussion?
Is it second round?
Second round, Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you. Uh, so either, um, Mr. Smith or Ms. Onifer, you said it was acquired within the last year through different, um, processes. Um, do you, can you tell us when it was? When did you start using it?
So we, we started using it in May. So shortly after we started, a couple of months after we started working from home.
I see. So May twenty twenty. And, um, you said, you know, it's viable, so you can hear what people are thinking. But can you give us examples of something that you learned and then how you responded? You may, you may have put that in there a little bit, but I didn't really kind of catch it.
Sure. So one example, um, you know, obviously the, the COVID-19 pandemic was, um, folks are looking to us for answers. And, um, you know, in the beginning, we weren't really sure which way to go. So it was helpful in understanding, um, which communities were identifying different needs, um, so that we could help tailor responses to that.
Such as, like, could you give me something concrete? I mean, we all, I know it's been a very long year. It's been a very long year. We've all been trying to respond to a lot of things. So I understand not being able to really kind of come up with it, like, let me give you some ideas, right? We all heard a lot of concerns and activation from neighborhoods around, um, food insecurity. I've talked about that a lot last year. And my, I was really impressed by the volunteer response in my district for even like hyper-local neighborhood food distributions, that kind of thing. Masks, vaccines.
The one example I would say that, um, sort of came up from last year was, you know, as, sorry, this just popped into my head, but, you know, if, if given more time, I can come up with more examples for you, uh, Councilwoman. The, um, when folks were going into the parks more, the, um, there was a lot of chatter about what the rules were for wearing masks in parks. Um, so, you know, being able to identify that as a question that a lot of folks were asking while a lot of people were using parks, we were able to coordinate with, um, you know, the park rangers and, you know, DPW to sort of clarify that and, and get some more information about that on social media and as well as in the parks. That's just one example.
I definitely heard concern from community members who didn't feel safe around people who weren't marrying, marrying masks, uh, when it was our, even our guidance from the federal government was unclear at that time. And it wasn't as, as clear and directive as it might have been for people, um, at the early points of the pandemic. Uh, but I, I feel like we, we, we heard those, like, I, I, Councilman Coghill said, yeah, I got those calls, um, and emails. And certainly people use our direct messaging platforms, which I have to just say to the public aren't the best way to contact my office emails. Please email us at districtseven@pittsburghpa.gov because we don't always catch the weird little inboxes that are embedded in all the various, um, social media platforms. It's not the most reliable method. Uh, but we, you do, we did hear those concerns directly. Certainly people came to public comment and, um, talked about the issues that they were facing. Um, and called our offices and reached out. Um, I, I still, as I said, I, I mean, I, I would prefer to have time to see how other cities have rules around the uses of these kinds of platforms, have, um, best practice guidelines about who has access to the information, about what kind of information could or could not be, um, accessed, um, even though I see that people's names are, are, um, removed. Um, it's, it gives me great pause. Um, so I, I'm not supportive today. And that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any further members, second round? If not, the only thing I would say, I think I understand your concern, Councilwoman Gross, but I just assumed cities were already doing this sort of stuff. So, um, because once you put anything on social media is for public consumption, there's no expectation of privacy. So I just assume government was already doing these sort of analyses. Um, but if there's nothing else, we do have a motion to approve. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Abstain.
One opposed, one abstention. The bill does receive a favoritism recommendation.
Mr. Chair, just briefly, I would like to make sure that, um, Councilwoman Gross gets her questions answered between now and Tuesday. I should have said this earlier, but, um, so I would be happy to work with Molly and with Todd and Councilwoman Gross and Councilman Coghill. If you have further questions, concerns, or any other council members, let's get those very specific, very detailed questions answered. I have some of my own. Some of them have already been answered in my briefing prior to today, but I continue to have questions about this as well. Thank you.
Appreciate that, Councilwoman.
Thank you. That takes us to Bill fourteen forty-seven.
Bill fourteen forty-seven, Resolution Amending Resolution Thirty, amending an agreement with EDOP Technologies LLC for licensing services and maintenance and support services for a three-year contract extension and at an additional cost not to exceed ninety-one thousand two hundred forty-two dollars and fifty-one cents.
Just.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill is recommended. That takes us to our Intergovernmental Affairs Committee chaired by Councilwoman Gross. Uh, first, it is one, oh, six, three, four.
Why some kind of U-turn usage information?
Um, okay, good. Bill six thirty-four, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Soil Facilities Plan for proposed land development located at three sixteen South Howland Avenue.
Um, I, I'm going to allow Councilman Strasburger to speak to this for a minute, so motion to approve a discussion.
Thank you. This has been on our agenda for, I think, probably about six months now. And, um, there is no permit filed. We can't get a hold of property owners. So I actually like to motion a table if at some point they move forward with a project, although to, to remove.
Second.
Uh, roll call vote, Madam Clerk.
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill?
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus. Mr. O'Connor. Mrs. Kell Smith. Ms. Strausberger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. LaBelle Chair.
Aye, and I believe Councilman Kraus logged on to register and I vote as well.
I six, no zero.
Thank you. The bill is tabled. Bill 1368.
Bill 1368, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for Proposed Land Development Located at the corner of Harrian Avenue and Ruthven Street, including those parcels identified on the attached Exhibit B.
This one is in litigation and awaiting a court date. So I'm going to motion to hold it for eight weeks.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Bill will be held eight weeks. Uh, let's see. Our last bill of the day, Bill 1438.
1438, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 6629 through 6633 Numberlin Street, North Thumbelinn Street, project located at 6629 through 6633 North Thumbelinn.
Motion to approve.
Next second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill receives a positive recommendation. That does exhaust our agenda for today. We do have some meeting announcements. This evening at 6:00 PM, council will host a cablecast post-agenda discussion of healthcare workers in the city of Pittsburgh chaired by Councilwoman Strausberger. Next week, due to the primary election, council will hold both our regular and standing committee meetings on Monday, May 17th at 10:00 AM and 1:30 PM respectively. You can register to speak at next week's meetings by filling out the signup form on the council meeting schedule webpage by 9:00 AM Monday for the regular meeting and by Monday at 12:30 PM for the standing committee meeting. You may also register by calling the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Also, next Wednesday, May 19th, with sessions at 11:00 and 12:00 PM, council will hold a briefing on the University of Pittsburgh Master Plan. Is there anything else from members? If not, Councilwoman Strausberger, I will not be able to pay attention at 6 o'clock. I have another meeting, but I will watch it after the fact. We need a motion to excuse absent members, approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You are behind. Thank you.